I just didn't know if we needed to be worried about it. Sounds like we don't.
Yes, first thing is Accent on Achievement.
After the pledge, right?
After the pledge, yeah. People to get sued.
Must have been hungry, he grabs some progress.
Yeah.
Thank you for fixing the little things. Oh, don't call, I did it. Okay. I think we share.
Typically they throw an A at the end, so E-A-U-S.
Probably more common. No, I was sick of the lights, yeah. I'm gonna have a headache tonight.
You don't have to say it. No, no.
Look official.
Principals are saying that.
Oh, I don't like these words.
Yeah, yeah.
I think some kind of arrow said, "What's the name reader at graduation?" Some like, "Do you want to find out something?" And you want to do it, like, as a challenge, you know? Give me your name and tell me how to say it. I don't know how to say the right word for you. I don't know why, I think that would be cool.
Yeah, and there's something to be said about, you know, getting a challenging name. You know, like I said, most people misspronounce mine, or certainly misspell.
I'd like to call the May ninth, 2022 Special Board of Education Meeting to order. Roll call, please.
Mr. Devereaux.
Here.
Ms. Martin.
Here.
Ms. Nolan.
Here.
Ms. Owens.
Here.
Ms. Porter.
Here.
Ms. Thomas.
Here.
President Kerr.
Here.
Our first item is a Pledge of Allegiance. If you could please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
The first item on our agenda tonight is Accent on Achievement, and Board Member, Board Vice President Melissa Owens will be presenting those awards.
Good evening, everyone, and thank you for coming here tonight. It's a pleasure and an honor to be here with you all. Before we get started recognizing our fantastic seniors tonight, we are going to recognize three staff members who were recently recognized by the Kane County Regional Office of Education. We are recognizing Sandy Ritter, Dr. Stephen Tucker, and Juan Figueroa. If you could come up to the front. So I am going to read these three certificates for the staff members here. This is a certificate of achievement. The Board of Education of School District U-46 hereby recognizes Sandy Ritter, teacher of middle school, I'm sorry, TEFT, middle school teacher, for being nominated for Educator of the Year. Dr. Stephen Tucker, South Elgin High School Assistant Principal, for being nominated for Educator of the Year. And lastly, Juan Figueroa, Elgin High School Teacher, for receiving Regional Superintendent Award by the Kane County Regional Office of Education. These certificates are dated on May ninth, 2020, signed by President Sue Kerr and Superintendent Dr. Tony Sanders. Congratulations to you all.
Buenas tardes. Si alguien necesita interpretación en español, hay pares de audífonos ahí atrás. Por favor, pasen a recoger uno. Gracias.
Good evening. My name is Lela Mistorovic, and I am the Assistant Superintendent of Schools. It is my pleasure to welcome our Board of Education, parents, and other honorary guests, and especially our esteemed top two percent members of the class of 2022. The fifty-six students being recognized tonight represent the best in terms of academic achievement from our five high schools. Give them a round of applause. It's great to have the opportunity to have our students and guests in person again for this year's ceremony. I hope that all of you know how proud of, how proud we are of our top two percent students. Please look to our Class of 2022 website to learn more about each of our students. We'll also be sharing your success via our district's social media channels. To help us get started tonight, it is my honor to introduce our Board of Education President, Mrs. Sue Kerr.
Thank you, Mrs. Mistorovic, and good evening, everyone. It is great to be here, and it's great to be here in person. We have truly come a long way in this past year, a very difficult year, but I know you have all remained strong and hopeful through these difficult times. It is truly an honor to be here, and it is truly an honor to be with you amazing students. On behalf of the Board, we want to extend to you our heartfelt admiration, pride, and best wishes for continued success. Tonight's ceremony is a Board's way of saying thank you for your commitment to your education. For your parents and family members in attendance, we know that your child's achievement is tied directly to your level of involvement and guidance. Thank you so much for all you have done for them. I want to give you all a round of applause. In this crowd tonight, we have students moving on to Elgin Community College, the University of Illinois at Urbana-Champaign, University of Pennsylvania, UC Berkeley, the University of Notre Dame, Northwestern University, among many, many other wonderful colleges and universities. Our sincere congratulations to each of you. We know you will soar as you move on to college. During your time in college, please consider how you can mentor others, but most of all, make the most of those four years in college. They will go by so quickly and just really make the most of them. We all wish we could go back. I'm not saying go into education or teach in the classroom, but if you decide that teaching is your passion and is the right career path, please come back and visit us. We'd love to have you back in U-46. Again, congratulations and thank you.
Thank you, Board President, Mrs. Kerr. We do appreciate you and our entire Board of Education for your unwavering support and commitment to our students, especially during these last two years. It is now my honor to introduce our Superintendent, Dr. Tony Sanders.
Thank you so much. Sorry, I'm gonna pull this off and kind of come out and talk. I'd rather step out here. Good evening, everybody. Isn't this exciting? For our principals who are in the room, they know that last year we had to do this via Zoom, and it just is not the same on Zoom. So we're so glad to be back in person to recognize the top two percent of our graduating class. Earlier this evening, just a few minutes ago, Board President Kerr asked you to recognize your parents. I'm gonna ask you to be a little bit louder this time. Okay, because really, your parents, your network, your network here that's here to support you tonight, the people at home that have supported you through your academic journey, and all of the teachers who are at home watching you online or who are here in person with you tonight, helped you get to where you are today. We also know it's through your perseverance, but all those that helped you get here, can you give them a round of applause, please? So I have to explain why the Board is sitting up here and why we have all these formalities tonight. A little later on, you're gonna hear for a call for public comments. Anytime the Board is gathered in one place to do work of the Board, which this is considered work of the Board, we have to post it as an open meeting, and that's why you'll see some of the formality. So I just wanted to explain why it seems a little bit more formal. Madam President also spoke a little bit about going into the teaching profession. So I want to do a quick survey of our top two percent. If you're going into healthcare, can you raise your hand, please? Healthcare, is that what your desire field? A lot of healthcare, okay. How about law? Anybody going into law? Okay. Business, finance? Wonderful. How about social work, psychology, something in the mental health fields? One, okay. Teaching? Anybody considering going into teaching? One teacher, awesome, okay. So as you depart, we not only hire teachers, we hire lawyers. We have lawyers on staff. We have teachers, we have social workers, we have nurses, we have all sorts of employees who work in this school district. And we do offer you an interview. If you graduate and you see some posting that you qualify for in U-46, you're gonna call me up, you're gonna send me an email, and you're gonna say, "I want an interview." And parents, listen closely. I'll guarantee them an interview for an open position for which they qualify. Does that sound like a deal? Have a job waiting when you get out of college. Not only that, we just started a tuition reimbursement program. So if you want to continue to further your career, once you join U-46 as like a paraeducator, you can actually get some additional college years built up under your belt on our dime. So just keep that in mind as well, future U-46 employees. It is, again, such an honor to be here with you tonight. I look forward to this every year. As we go over to take the photos, I will note that you'll see me wearing my mask most of the evening, and that is to protect myself. We have high school graduations coming up soon, and I want to make sure I'm healthy and keep everybody else healthy. I will be taking my mask off for the photos, and if you would rather us have our masks on, if you want me to have my mask on when it comes time for the photo, just ask me, and I will make sure I put my mask on, okay? That sound like a deal with you guys? All right. I cannot thank you enough for all that you've put into your academic efforts. It says a lot that among 12,000 high school students, 3,000 graduating seniors this year, that you made it into the top two percent. Can you just stand up, turn around, and let everybody at home see you on YouTube? And give them a big wave. Go on, stand up and give them a wave. Again, ladies and gentlemen, the top two percent of the graduating class of 2022. Thank you so much for being here.
All right, thank you, Superintendent Sanders. And now we'll introduce our graduates by school in alphabetical order. When your principal reads your name, please step up onto the stage to receive your certificate from one of our board members. You'll go up on this side of the stage and then make your way across to get your certificate and take your photo. You'll pose in front of the U-46 backdrop for a photo with Dr. Sanders and Board President, Mrs. Kerr. And please remain onstage for a group photo of your school's top two percent students. The first principal to recognize her students is Dr. Jennifer Van Dusen, Principal of Streamwood High School.
Good evening. I am gonna live out my best rebel moment and not do them in alphabetical order, but I just have my own fun special order for you. Good evening, scholars, parents, and colleagues. I have the esteemed honor to recognize eight outstanding scholars from Streamwood High School that balance both academic and extracurricular rigor and perseverance. Without further ado, let's get started. Our first Streamwood High School scholar to be recognized is Vanessa Pitsenbarger. Vanessa will be attending North Carolina State University in the fall. She will be studying horticulture science. Vanessa's favorite memories at SHS are learning routines and doing performances for Color Guard. The best advice Vanessa has to offer for freshmen is do the dual-credit program in high school, exclamation mark. If you want to feel challenged and get ahead in college courses, I definitely recommend looking into it for the last two years of high school. I feel like I learned a lot and that I'm well-prepared for a four-year college. Vanessa couldn't be with us this evening, but accepting on her behalf is me. Our next scholar is Haran Yang. Haran will be attending the University of Illinois at Urbana-Champaign in the fall and will major in biology, pre-med, and minor in psychology. Her most important lesson learned in high school is that hard work pays off, and her favorite class was AP Biology because it offers an explanation for almost everything. Haran credits a great friend group and her teachers for helping her along the way. Congratulations. Up next is Caitlin Esteban, who will attend Elgin Community College to complete her Associate's in Arts to transfer for her BSN. She plans to major in nursing. Her most important lesson learned in high school is to see challenges as learning experiences. Her best memory was meeting new people she now cares deeply about. Caitlin's advice for freshmen, "Keep in mind that everybody is growing with you, and it's okay if your friends grow apart from you. The most important thing is that you focus on taking care of yourself." Congratulations, Caitlin. Our fourth scholar is Kayla T. Sharafi. Kayla will be attending Harper College and majoring in Diagnostic Medical Sonography. Her favorite classes at SHS are all the math classes she can get her hands on. Advice for freshmen, "Focus on school, but get involved in activities. It is where your best memories will be made." Kayla accredits her parents, brother, and friends that have kept her going to be her best version of herself. Congratulations, Kayla. Our next Streamwood High School scholar is Joshua Menzano. Joshua will be attending Elgin Community College for two years and then transferring to a university. He plans to major in biology or environmental science. Joshua's favorite class is environmental science, and favorite memory is playing volleyball. Joshua credits his parents for his success, especially his dad, for always pushing him to do better and strive for more. Congratulations, Joshua. Up next is Michelle Mazhar. She will be our next scholar to be announced. Michelle will be attending University of Illinois, Urbana-Champaign, in the fall and studying biology with the goal of becoming a physician. Michelle has learned that hard work pays off, and that has shown at her time at SHS. Michelle's favorite memory at SHS was homecoming week with all the spirit all week long. Her favorite class was AP Biology. The class opened her eyes and made her realize she wanted to be, to major in biology and head on a pre-med path. Congratulations, Michelle. Our next scholar is Caitlin Nugent. Caitlin will be attending University of Illinois, Urbana-Champaign, in the fall and is planning to major in business or marketing. The most important thing learned in high school was the importance of staying productive and balancing time between school, work, family, sports, and friends. Life lessons learned her senior year, learning the importance of trying your best, pushing a little harder won't hurt, but look back, and knowing that you could have done more carries regrets. Knowing you put your best efforts in is rewarding in the end. Congratulations, Caitlin. Our final SHS scholar we are recognizing this evening is Jennifer Voravong. Jenny is attending University of Illinois, Chicago, in the fall, majoring in chemistry and minoring in psychology. Jenny's advice to freshmen, and this is really good advice, "Good days give happiness, bad days give experience, the worst days give lessons, and the best days give memories." Jenny thanks her parents, who have supported her over the past four years. The number of times they've supported her decisions and guided her in the right direction is one of the reasons where she is today. She can't thank them enough. Congratulations, Jenny. All right, thank you, Dr. Van Dusen, and congratulations to our top two percent students from Streamwood High School. Let's give them a round of applause. And now I have the pleasure of introducing Dr. Kurt Johansson, Principal of South Elgin High School.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Kurt Johansson. I am the proud principal at South Elgin High School. I'd like to congratulate all of the students on this prestigious honor in this evening. Your hard work has definitely paid off and should be commended. With that, we will start with our top two percent at South Elgin High School. Up first, Abigail Choi. Abigail will be attending the University of Illinois, Urbana-Champaign, where she intends on majoring in business. Her favorite, her favorite class in high school was her freshman honors geometry class. She took, the reason why is that the teacher took time to make genuine connections with each of her students, and the environment made her feel safe, welcome, and wanted. The biggest life lesson she learned was flexibility. There were many disappointments, cancellations, and fears last year, but taking life a day at a time makes life so much easier. Congratulations. Up next, Anna Kriegen. Anna will be attending the University of Wisconsin-Madison with an intended major in kinesiology. Anna's favorite class was math, and the life lesson she learned was that she's able to adapt to changes in her life. She learned how to be more independent, which will help her in college. Congratulations. Caroline Croft. Caroline will be attending the University of Dallas, where she intends on playing basketball there with a major in biology and pre-physical therapy. Her favorite class has been the human body systems. The class, she says, "Has challenged me a lot. I find it intriguing and astonishing to understand how the body works." The most valuable life lesson that she learned was to live in the moment because tomorrow's never guaranteed. You can't spend time living in the past or worrying about the future. You need to live now. Congratulations. Liliana Hernandez will be attending the University of Wisconsin at Madison with an intended major on neurobiology and a minor in global health on the pre-med track. Liliana loved her AP Chemistry class this year because it challenged her. The class size was so small, we were all super close, and we got to be, we got to, we've got to get hands-on through experiments and demonstrations. She's learned how important it's always to live in the moment because my time in high school has gone by faster than I ever could have thought. Congratulations. Emma Hunter. Emma will be attending Austin State University in Clarksville, Tennessee with an intended major on Health and Human Performance, Concentration Communication Sciences and Disorders. Her sophomore Beacon Teacher was her most memorable teacher. His classroom was a safe space for everyone who came in. He would regularly send in weekly mental health check-ins to make sure we were doing all right, and he'd give full responses to our questions. Her life lesson was just how important human interaction truly is. It was really eye-opening just how vital in-person social interactions are to me and my academic success. Congratulations. Up next is Ashlyn Lee. Ashlyn will be attending DePaul University, where she is an undecided major in the College of Science and Health. Her favorite class this year was AP Psychology, and she learned not to take anything for granted because things can change so quickly. Congratulations, Ashlyn. Up next, our valedictorian, Rachel McClellan. Rachel will be attending the University of California at San Diego with an intended major in mechanical engineering. Her favorite class was AP Calculus because although it was on Zoom, my teacher was very engaging and sweet. A life lesson, perseverance, is an important virtue, especially during a time where patience was often worn thin. Being resilient and able to trust that time will lead to greater things is truly a key to success. Congratulations. Up next is Salavi Patel. Salavi will be attending the University of Illinois at Urbana-Champaign with an intended major in psychology. Her favorite class was psychology, and a life lesson was, "I learned I can get through a pandemic. I can do anything." Congratulations. Our next student and salutatorian is Gino Santini. Gino will be attending the University of Notre Dame, where he intends, that's okay, you can clap, yeah, where he intends on majoring in business management with a minor in entrepreneurship and innovation. His favorite class was Mr. Neville's environmental science class. His life lesson was, "I learned the importance of challenging myself day by day in order to grow in every aspect of my life." Congratulations, Gino. Up next is Michael Walchuk. Michael is not here, but we're still gonna congratulate him anyway. Michael will be attending the University of Illinois at Urbana-Champaign, where he intends to major in engineering. His favorite class was his freshman year math class. An important life lesson we learned was adapting. Was adapting is an important skill that will be used in your be used in your life when you least expect it. Congratulations, Michael. Our next student is Loriele Wilson. Loriele will be attending the University of California at Berkeley, where she intends on majoring in Business Administration with a minor in Pre-Law. Her favorite class was AP Stats with Ms. Lukinas, and a life lesson was to appreciate the connections you have with people and to enjoy the little things. Don't take anything for granted. Congratulations. Up next is Ella Winterhalder. Ella will be attending Penn State University with an intended major in Forensic Science. Her favorite class was the Principles of Biomedical Science. She said, "This class was so passionate and engaging that it led me to pursue my interest in forensic science." She said that she's learned to value experiences and relationships more than accomplishments. The road you take to get there is just as valuable as the end goal. Congratulations, Ella. And last but not least, our senior class president, Yuri Yu. Yuri will be attending the University of Illinois at Urbana-Champaign with an intended major in Business. Her favorite learning experience was going on a field trip to DePaul University for Beacon and getting to see their filming studio. Her life lessons is, everything will always work out. Congratulations, Yuri.
All right, let's give it up for South Elgin High School's top 2%. And the next school we'll be recognizing is Elgin High School. Now I'll introduce Principal, Mr. Jamie Crowson.
Just like my colleagues, I would like to thank all of our 2% grads. It's an accomplishment in and of itself to be here. I will reiterate what everyone has said. This accomplishment, while it feels individual, it is a team effort. Your parents, your friends, your close ones, your relatives, they make this possible for you because they believe in you, they coach you, they love you, they care for you. So appreciate them even in this individual, when this feeling of an individual award, okay? All right, so first kid, first amazing kid I might say too, Yahya Arustu. He will be attending Northwestern University, majoring in Political Science and adjunct in International Studies. His favorite, his life lesson, among the most important lessons I've learned, is to not take anything for granted, whether I am looking at the war in Ukraine or the millions of families that have been disrupted by COVID. I've gained a greater appreciation for the blessings I have and the opportunities that I have been given to me to help me succeed. Amazing young man, Yahya Arustu. Next is another amazing young lady, Nicole Babich. She will be attending the University of Pennsylvania, studying in Politics, Philosophy, and Economics. Her favorite memory, my favorite memory of high school, is when me and my tennis teammates made a human pyramid to cheer ourselves up after a game. It was the funniest experience of my life, and I treasure those photos we look, of how we look. The pictures stand as a symbol of how much I gained from the sport, including the bonds and other players and coaches' skills and strengths, mentality, and physically. I will forever keep the photo on my phone and look back at it at when I need to smile. Nicole. Our next student is Schwetha Dar. She will be attending the University of Illinois-Champaign, studying Eco-Econometrics and Quantitative Economics. Life lesson is, I learned especially over the course of this year, is that you and everyone around you is constantly changing. Always allow yourself to grow and be able to accept change. What an amazing young lady, Schwetha Dar. Sarah Erickson is not here because she's playing soccer right now, but she's amazing. She will be attending Michigan State and studying Nursing. Her, her life lesson, I found the most joy in life when working from intrinsic motivation instead of extrinsic motivation. Life is impressive, with life to impress yourself and not, live to impress yourself and not others. Sarah Erick, Sarah Erickson. Our next one is Emily Flores. She will be attending Williams College, studying in Political Science and Philosophy. Her favorite memory, her favorite memory, in high school, were in orchestra concerts. After weeks of practicing each piece, it would all come together for our family and friends to enjoy. Ms. Emily Flores. Our next student is Sophia Heinrich. She will be attending Wheaton College for interdisciplinary. Life lesson, that it is important to come to terms with the fact that things are temporary, and it is best to savor them while you have them. Ms. Sophia Heinrich. I must say, you're blown away by just reading what they're, what these young people are imparting into us older folks, and you're like, good lord, I wish I had this when I was their age, right, parents? Right? So, I'm sorry, back. Next student, Abby Joyce. She is, she is attending the University of Illinois Urbana for Chemical Engineering. Life lesson in 2021, school year usually showed me, I feel the most, I feel for most people the importance of in-person communication and activities, as long as they are not risking one's health, not just for mental health, but for success. Ms. Abby Joyce. I think Maya is also at soccer. Maya Lesnick is also at soccer. She will be attending the University of Texas-Austin for Exercise Science. Her life lesson is that life is constant learning and experience. Setbacks that once, that I once thought were detrimental extended up being, by guiding me to success and happiness. Control as much as you can in your life, but those aspects that are not in your hands have to be left alone. Have faith in your talent and the natural courses of life. Ms., Ms. Maya Lesnick, she's not here. Ms. Michelle Maslow. She will be attending either the University of Notre Dame or the University of Illinois and studying Biology Pre-Med. Her favorite memory, her favorite memory of high school would have to be the time where I was alongside my classmate, where we were able to cut up sheep, cheap heart, in Principles of Biomedical Science sophomore year of high school. The concepts of studying the heart and being able to have hands-on lab was an incredible experience. And Mr. Crowson would have thrown up shortly after. Congratulations, Michelle. Vanessa Madrano. She will be attending the University of Texas-Austin and studying Computer Science. Her life lesson, during my last year of high school, I've learned how important it is to live in the moment and enjoy the current chapter of my life. Now more than ever, I am grateful for all the friends and acquaintances I've made, and I look forward to growing, growing a circle in college. Ms. Vanessa. Angelina Nato will be attending Benedictine University in Biology and Spanish. Her life lesson, I've learned that there are always a bright side to the unfortunate things that happen in life, even if one of the, even if one has to search a little and find it. During the 2021 school year, I was, I was not found of repetitive cycle of Zoom, I was not fond of the repetitive cycle of Zoom classes and the technology issues that came with it. However, I discovered a key thing about myself. I learned and focused much better in person when, with a teachers, with my teachers, rather than on a screen, in front of them, speaking, knowing who they are and what will happen. Helped tailor my studies, habits, and focus on classroom education to my liking and in the future. And the COVID school year has definitely played a role in helping me realize this today. Ms. Angelina. Jenny Nugent. She will be attending Northwestern University in Biomedical Engineering. What her favorite memory of high school is attending football games wrapped in blankets with hot chocolate in hand and on, during the chilly weather. While Mr. Crowson is also complaining about the chilly weather. That is Jenny. She's not here. Last is Alexandra Rodriguez Garcia. She will be attending Northwestern University and studying Pre-Dental, English and Pre-Dental. Her life lesson, during my junior year, I learned to find the positive side of things that as a whole may not seem ideal. I was part of the hybrid group, and I feel like I became very close to people that also were part of it that I had never talked to before. I also became very appreciative of the small things, such as how easy it was to get in and out of a parking lot. Things aren't always going to go as easy, go as planned, but learning to adapt in the time of change was definitely something I gained. Those are our Elgin Maroon, top 2%.
Congratulations, Elgin High School's top 2%. And the next group of students that we'll be recognizing are from Bartlett High School, and I'll introduce their principal, Mr. Michael Demofsky.
Believe honors succeed, we are BHS and we dream big. You've done all three. It's my sixth year doing this, and I'm going to tell you what, this group of students is incredibly special. They've been through a lot, but I'm going to tell you right now, I've seen groups that have been very, like, fighting, competitive with each other to try to, this, this group couldn't be more different. You're kind, you treat each other just like how people want to be treated, and you really look out for each other. So for somebody who is watching you, just please know that that means a lot to me. So let's meet these amazing students. Our first is Evan Bulatak. Evan, like a few other students, will be attending Northwestern University, and throughout his four years, he doesn't want to exaggerate, yes, that was planned, good job. That he's had wonderful moments in every class, and he wants, he's got a little bit of Ferris Bueller in him, because his advice is, time travels a little fast, especially when we want it to slow down. So great job, Evan. Our next hawk is Carter Ayden. Carter is going to be committed to the University of Illinois. He's learned how resilient people can be, absolutely, fist bump, my man. But also the life lessons that when things get back to normal, that people are naturally capable of exploring solutions and executing them, and that's what he likes. Ladies and gentlemen, my man Carter. Thank you. And I'm sorry if I get a little emotional. I know these students so well, and I'm just so proud of them. Our next student is Jilin Ganeshankar. It seems like we've been to a few of these together. He is going to the University of Illinois at Urbana-Champaign, is going to do Computer Science. Please make something cool. Favorite class has been, just general situation, the hands-on nature of the academy, but projects like his electoral for thesis, I taught Spanish, I have no idea what that is. The automatic projects and trust projects are just some examples. His life lesson is that he really learned a lot during the 2021 year. Of course, if he had to pick something, it would be the value of in-person learning. Ladies and gentlemen, Jilin Ganeshankar. Lorenzo Amerisigan, where are you, Lorenzo? Lorenzo, another one of our amazing students, will be attending the Carnegie Mellon or George Tech, we got a decision? All right, go Yellow Jackets. Working on a project for the entire year has been his favorite moment in PLTW Engineering Design. He may not always be willing or able to move forward, but the world is apathetic to how we feel, so life keeps going on without us anyways. While it gets overwhelming at times, try to keep up with everything you may have going on. Lorenzo Amerisigan. Anthony Martin. Anthony is going to Valpo, Valparaiso University, he's going to study Mechanical Engineering. Favorite class was Senior Tech. I did enjoy his Battle Tanks game, very sweet, although I crashed every time, but it was wonderful. He's been working all year long with a group on the project, and that was Battle Tanks. That is his mother. Ladies and gentlemen, board member Dawn Martin. How special is that? And Anthony would like to say his life lesson, his learned about himself, is that it's much easier to work with others than to try to learn on your own, and that goes exactly to the nature of this entire group. Thank you, Anthony Martin. Jillian. Jillian Murdock. As an Indiana University graduate, I guess I can say she's going to Purdue. Congratulations, she's going to study Civil Engineering. Nice job. One of the classes, her favorite class was Principles of Engineering. They actually had a really good life lesson where they had a shelf that busted in the middle of the class. We did fill out an accident report, it's okay. But the teacher allowed them to actually fix and design everything, of course, with plan operations support. But ladies and gentlemen, that's just real-world experience, and her life lesson is that, learned that it's important to stay in touch with people when you can't see them. That hits right to home. I also learned that people deal with the same things differently, you have to be understanding of how things affect people differently. Jillian Murdock. Ronit. Ronit Nagarapu. He's going to Berkeley. That's in California. He's going to be studying Computer Science, as I've said before, please make something cool. His favorite learning experience was definitely his capstone project in PLTW. His group of students, they found a problem in the real world, developed a viable product to solve it, and 99% sure yours was the amazing, the search dog that can go down into the tunnels. Ronit, right? The dog? You made the dog, right? Yeah, it's like a search robot, that like, if there's avalanches, it's, if there's a light on it, I mean, it's legit, could be sold right now, and his whole group, I'm sure some of these kids, but never dwell in the past, he says. Keep your focus on what you want to do next, it makes your goal better than you were yesterday. It's great advice. Ladies and gentlemen, Ronit Nagarapu. Amazing kids. Desiree. Desiree Oliveros. Desiree will be going to the University of Urbana-Champaign. She's going to study Civil Engineering. Please make something safe. Her favorite class was Principles of Engineering, took sophomore year, it was that, she wanted to realize that she wanted to be a civil engineer. That's converting dreams into realities. She learned this school year, her life lesson is that, about herself and the world, that it's important for everyone to prioritize their mental health over anything. Ladies and gentlemen, Desiree Oliveros. Marcos. Marcos Sanson. Marcos is going to Grand Valley State University, where he will be studying Computer Science. Once again, make something cool and entertaining. His favorite class was Academy Honors Design and Tech with Mr. Morales, is focused on making this, this project. His project also amazing, because he was part of that group with Ronit, and they made that robot dog that could be used to help and save people right now. Life lesson during the school year was the importance of staying focused and being determined. Ladies and gentlemen, Marcos Sanson. Azmyda. Come on up. Come on up, Azmeeda Shaw. Amazing student, I'm going to off script, Principal Student Advisory Board, works with, you know, Dr. Sanders, uh, she's going to go to the Stern School of Business at New York University. Don't forget to give back to you 46. Woo, in New York. Intended major is finance. It's a good place to go. Favorite class throughout the four years, uh, have been teachers who really work hard, AP Environmental Science, AP Physics, AP Psych, Marketing and Lit. Favorite experiences includes classes with friends, were able to joke around, have a good time, but also helping each other through the material we didn't understand. Absolutely. And her life lesson is that they gain a new appreciation for life and organized with gratitude and empathy. Again, this is a very special group of students to me. Ladies and gentlemen, the top two percent of Bartlett High School.
Lots of energy from Bartlett High School, congratulations. And it is my pleasure to introduce the principal of Larkin High School to recognize the top two percent from Larkin, Mrs. Crystal Bush.
Bartlett is always a hard, hard person, particularly Principal Demofsky to follow, but I will try my best. First and foremost, I want to congratulate each and every one of you wonderful students on your accomplishments. You should, parents, you should be proud, families, we are all proud today. Thank you. What I'm going to go a little differently as well, it's the bookends, so I will be going by rank as opposed to by alpha order, starting with our number one, Ella Nail. Well, Ella will be attending the University of Iowa, majoring in biomedical engineering with a minor in global health studies on a pre-med track. Her favorite high school memory is her first jug game against Elgin. We were the home team, we got to play for the band and everybody was super hyped up because it was both our rivalry game and our homecoming game. We ended up winning 52 to 14 and everyone felt super connected as a school. She would like to acknowledge all of her teachers, her, her amazing counselor and family and friends, if it would not have been possible without all of their help and support. Her life lesson is our ability to respond to adversity and challenges is much greater than we are aware of. We can't lose faith in ourselves or other people when things get hard because connections with each other is what will end up getting us through. Ella Nail. Lila Hanson. Lila is undecided on where she will be attending, but attends on majoring in psychology with a minor in political science. Her favorite high school memory is spending time with friends was the best, whether they were staying after school, before games or making the funniest memories ever in academy, she couldn't ask for better friends. She would like to acknowledge there are so many people that have helped her to get to this point, but her parents have been her biggest supporters since the beginning. They've pushed her to do, do her best in everything and were beyond understanding when she struggled. She couldn't have asked for better supporters and I wouldn't be anywhere near where I am without them. Her life lesson is that sometimes finding the motivation to keep pushing yourself can be the hardest thing. Staying on top of classes, assignments, extracurriculars, et cetera, can be really difficult at times, but pushing through and staying true to what you love and your goals will pay off in the end. Lila Hanson. Emma Han. Emma will be attending the University of Illinois at Urbana-Champaign, majoring in actuarial sciences in the fall. Her favorite high school memory is homecoming week, when they did dress-up days, the assemblies, football games, mini music festivals and the dances were super fun. She would like to acknowledge and thank her parents, Mrs. Montgomery, family, friends, coworkers and anyone who has supported her during the process. She would not be who she is today without the guidance and wisdom of others. Her life lessons is when I shifted from my high school to dual credit program at ECC after my sophomore year, my life completely changed. Taking all college classes on campus and not seeing my high school friends every day was different, to say the least. I soon realized that management, time management, independence and patience were crucial, crucial, excuse me, if I wanted to succeed and she's beyond grateful for the opportunity, opportunity to begin college two years early. Emma Han. Jordan Vopat. Jordan will be attending Loyola in the fall, majoring in environmental engineering. Her favorite high school memory is senior homecoming because it was so much fun. She would like to acknowledge and credit her dedication to just always diving into her studies and always pushing herself to do her best. She's always done it for her parents. Life lesson is that the world is going to always throw things at you, so honestly, just focus on what you can control. Jordan, congratulations. Hamena Bermudez. Hamena will be attending Aurora University with a double major in political science and data science. Her favorite high school memory is, the ones that I can remember the most are those I spent with my closest friends, whether it was in soccer, concerts, club meetings or study sessions. She would like to acknowledge her parents, relatives and friends who have unconditionally supported her. She is also incredibly grateful for all the staff that she has encountered through her K through 12 education, whether it was teachers, counselors or lunch supervisors, they all played an immense role in my education. And her life lesson is she has learned to take the most out of my resources and the importance of advocacy as a Latina and a woman of color. Hamena, congratulations. Alejandro Ramirez. Alejandro will attend Northern Illinois University, majoring in computer science. His favorite memory, high school memory is attending and winning the homecoming jug game against Elgin. He would like to acknowledge, uh, the his, that he does have a relatively good workflow and perseverance, but the reason for his success is that the great teachers that I've had that tried to help him any way he can, they can, excuse me. And his life lesson is that he's learned that you shouldn't compare your progress to anyone else's as it only hurts you. Instead, you should compare yourself to who you are, who you were yesterday and strive to better yourself. Also, he's learned that success is not always in a monetary value, but making sure that you are truly happy. Congratulations, Alejandro. Leah Mack. Leah will be attending Augustana College, majoring in psychology with a minor in music. Her favorite high school memory is traveling the Disney world with the Larkin Music Program to participate in the Disney instrumental workshop. She would like to acknowledge her family, friends and teachers for their support throughout her high school years. They are the people who pushed me to be my best and helped me get where I am today. Her life lesson is not to be afraid to step out of her comfort zone. That's where some of the best learning and personal growth can happen. Congratulations, Leah. Sarah Liardi. Sarah will attend Fontbonne University in St. Louis, majoring in biology for pre-chiropractic medicine with a potential minor in women and gender studies. She's also signed up to be on their competitive dance team. Her favorite high school memory was during her sophomore year that Larkin's Jazz Lab, the, she was in the Larkin Jazz Lab Band and they took a trip downtown Chicago to the jazz showcase where they were able to perform. She would like to, there's not one person she can actually pinpoint, uh, to thank, but she knows that her mom has always been there for her. Her passion for knowledge definitely influenced her and helped her stay motivated through high school. And her life lesson is last school year taught her a lot about intrinsic motivation and being stuck at home all the time made me question why I was doing things. I wanted to keep studying so that I wouldn't be behind if I, we got back in person. So I didn't have the excitement of seeing friends and teachers every day, so looking forward to those motivators made me more grateful and self-aware students. Thank you, Sarah. Congratulations. Our next student is Alberto Bonilla. Alberto will attend Emory University in Atlanta, Georgia with a major in nursing. His favorite high school memory is being able to make friends and connections. He would like to thank his teachers for their immense support, especially during the hardships of the pandemic. It took a lot of patience on their part and they had the determination to give us the best possible education. His life lesson is to always come into a situation with an open mind and not jump to conclusions quickly. Thank you, Alberto. Our next, Luca Tendi. Luca will be attending University of Illinois at Chicago, majoring in architecture. Luca's favorite high school memory was, it happened this year while he was on the drumline. During the performance of the jig two, I flipped upside down while playing. It was amazing. And would like to acknowledge there are so many people who helped me along the way. Everyone I have met has been an impact on my life. My parents, teachers, counselors, friends and all helped to contribute to my success. The life lesson is, is that due to the pandemic, I began to pay more attention to the world around me and what was happening throughout the world. During this time, I learned to accept myself. Congratulations, Luca. Our next amazing student is Joanna Hernandez. Joanna? Joanna will continue her studies at ECC and then transferred to a four-year university majoring in the medical field or mathematics. She would like to thank her older sister because she has always been there to help her and push her. Her life lesson is there are difficult times, still you can find a way to succeed, although it might not be one direct path. Congratulations, Joanna. Our last student who is not here tonight due to a rehearsal with the youth jazz ensemble of DuPage is Jackson Baker. Jackson will be attending Illinois Wesleyan University, majoring in music education. His favorite high school memory is the jazz lab, excuse me, jazz lab at Nutria Festival. And he would like to thank his parents and his life lesson is it is easy to become complacent, just continue to push forward. Thank you each and every one of you. Have a good.
Let's give a round of applause for Larkin High School's top two percent. Thank you again for joining us tonight. Uh, I just want to say again, congratulations for all of our top two percent students. Let's give one final round of applause for all of you. You've worked so hard for this accomplishment and we are so proud of you. We look forward to seeing all of you on Saturday, May 27th at graduation at the Now Arena. Uh, thank you for this evening and that concludes our class of 2022 top two percent graduates.
And the meeting is not quite over yet. We have to go through a couple more formalities. I believe we have no public comments, so we check that item off. And now I need a motion to move into closed session to discuss the appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance or dismissal of specific employees and for collective negotiating matters between the school board and its employees or their representatives or deliberations concerning salary schedules for one or more classes of employees. Roll call, please.
Mr. Deveraux.
Yes.
Ms. Martin? Ms. Nolan?
Yes.
Ms. Owens? Ms. Porter? Ms. Thomas? President Kerr? We're in closed session at 7:06 PM.
Thank you all and be sure to enjoy some of the food that's still out there.